Let's call this meeting to order. Notice of an open work session of the City Council of the City of North Kansas City, Missouri, January 21, 2020. Eric?
Thanks, sir. Tonight's work session is on the Destination Attractions Marketing Plan. The fiscal year 2020 budget includes some financial assistance to the North Kansas City Business Council to develop a marketing plan. And here to talk about how the Business Council is going about that with the assistance of Northland Caps and where it's headed. I'd like to start by introducing Rich Groves of the North Kansas City Business Council, and he in turn will introduce our presenters tonight.
Well, we consider a partnership with the city to work on Exploring KC, which is to support the destination attractions in North Kansas City. And we're really glad to have expanded this partnership to be, to include some students from the Northland Caps program. And I'm really proud of this group that was with us in the first semester, that four of them, one of them couldn't be here tonight. Worked really hard, did a lot of work, and you're going to see just the tip of the iceberg of all that they did. So they're going to introduce themselves. And I'm also really pleased that John Paul is transitioning also to, to be a part of four, one of four interns that we have this semester to implement the marketing plan that the first semester group put together that you're going to hear about tonight. And I want to thank Matt Mayner, who's been a very good coach and guide to both the team in the fall as well as to the interns going forward. So I'll let them introduce themselves.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name's Tristan Bramlett. I'm a senior at Park Hill South High School.
Good evening. My name's Matt Lockwoodser. I'm a senior at Park Hill High School.
Hello, everyone. I'm John Paul Garzon. I'm a senior at Park Hill High School. And our associate, Isaac, couldn't be here with us today, but he was, he worked along in the marketing plan with us. So to jump right into it, we made a destinations attraction marketing plan with the City of North Kansas City, the Business Council, and the Northern Caps Association. Northern Caps is the Center for Advanced Professional Studies. We, our, our strength is global business and logistics, where we partnered with different businesses around the Kansas City area. One of them was the North Kansas City Business Council. And we came up with this marketing plan that we're going to present with you guys today. So just a little summary to get started, a little bit about us. As I said before, we were from the Northern Caps Association. We are part of the Global Business Logistics. We will talk about our project, our mission for this marketing plan. We have specific goals set in place for this marketing plan to run its place and be effective. We gathered data and demographics to present along with this marketing plan. Our step number five is to actually implement marketing, marketing strategies to improve our demographics and so on. We will talk about giving NKC a story, financing, and how you can contact us at the end.
All right. So first, we're going to start with our project. And as you know, we had to create a destination attractions marketing plan. And our main mission for this project was to drive more people to come to North Kansas So first, we'll start off with what we have. Right now, we have the Exploring KC website and the hashtag, and we also have an Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook page that all post about the same content. So first off, we'll start with our goals. Before we could even make this marketing plan, we needed to identify who our customers were, what their needs are, and who we're competing with. Secondly, we had to implement the different methods of marketing, and this will be split up between the physical, digital, and along with incorporating a story as well. And lastly, we need to create a system to measure success, and we'll track this through our social media, website, and the number of visitors to the city. So first, before we get into any actual marketing, we need to talk about demographics on social media. So as you can see here, the most three used social medias in the United States are YouTube, Facebook, and Instagram. This research was done by the Pew Research Center, by the way, of March of last year. And as you can see, Facebook is the most prominently used social media besides YouTube, and that is more with the ages of 25 and up. And with Instagram, it's more, it's more focused on the ages of 24 and under. And as you can see, Twitter is not listed on this graphic, and that's because only one in five Americans use Twitter, and most of them just use it as a news feed. And this next graphic is teens who use social media. And we thought this graphic would be important to include because in the next five to 10 years, teens will be the next customers of North Kansas City, and we also want to market to them. As you can see here, the biggest social medias for them are YouTube, Instagram, and Snapchat. And this proves that we need to focus more on the Instagram and YouTube for this younger generation. And lastly, we conducted a survey of, just to get a general idea of what people thought of North Kansas City. The survey was conducted in person, and this was, this was done around our schools in North Kansas City and in our neighborhoods and communities. So 90% of people had visited North Kansas City at least once, which kind of conflicts with data we got later on in the survey. And the most important question in the survey, I believe, was, when I say North Kansas City, what comes to mind? So on this, 15 people said the wrong location, and that contradicts, and contradicts with the 90% of people who had visited North Kansas City at least once. So this kind of proves that North Kansas City has an image problem. People don't know exactly where North Kansas City is. We want to focus on that in our marketing plan. But the good news is, we had more positive feedback than negative feedback. And when I say positive feedback, I mean people saying they felt like North Kansas City was a home. They felt like it was up and coming. They felt like it was developing, and it was a great place to be. And more of the negative feedback was associated with people who weren't really sure of what North Kansas City was. They said they drive through it on their way to work, and they thought Burlington was dirty. And 40% of respondents named at least one specific place is the first thing they thought of. And these, the top three would include Chicken and Pickle, First Watch, and the high school. And we believe this is important because we can build around these things, sort of as a, as a home base, to kind of expand their reach when we market to them.
So we cremated, we created a competitive analysis matrix to compare North Kansas City to the shopping areas and cities and the KC metro. We wanted to focus on how many businesses, the population, the areas in square miles, the sales tax of each city and shopping area. Most importantly, we want to focus on the weakness and strengths of each city. So we use this to compare North Kansas City to any other cities. Like, for the weaknesses and strengths, people said North Kansas City was industrial and dirty. But for the strengths, they said it was shopping, entertainment, restaurants, businesses, and schools. And the strengths are kind of the same throughout the, all the cities and shopping areas, but the weaknesses are, set a big difference between North Kansas City and all those cities.
I'll give you guys a minute to look through that.
Who were the survey, who was the survey group? Did you say this?
Survey group, we interviewed individuals at our schools and our neighborhoods. And we also went out and just in public and asked people. So I got a few from the Parkville Farmers Market. And Matt and I also went to the opening of the Iron District to interview people.
Cool.
So then that was a pretty broad range of age as well?
Yes. Yeah.
So continuing on, we made three personas that we want to target throughout this marketing plan. The first persona was the young professional. These range from ages 20 to mid-30s, and their recreational activities consist of being with friends, going out to bars, drinking, the nightlife. Their social media is mostly based around Instagram being their primary and Facebook being their secondary. Our second persona was young families. These were late 20s, early mid-40s. Their recreational activities consisted of family activities, going to restaurants with their family, going to parks, and doing family-related activities. Their social media, their primary social media was Facebook, and their secondary social media was Instagram. Our third and final persona is experienced professionals and retirees. These are 50-plus. Their type of entertainment consists of group, group activities, like learning new things, board games, small stuff. They are the most financially developed group, which means they have the most money and the most free time available. They are, however, limited in social media. This is why they're third in our group. We can't market to them as much as we can, the young professionals. So for our social media attacking, our marketing plan on social media, first is Instagram. Our targets for Instagram, as I explained, is young professionals. These people are invested in Instagram more than any other persona or age group. They, they like to post about the nightlife that they're, they partake and so on. The secondary target is young families and professionals. These are families that like to post pictures of their kids in parks, in restaurants. We, we can also target these families in Instagram. For our target post split is how much we want to spend time targeting these personas. So 50% of the resources, we want to focus towards young professionals, market towards young professionals, so more nightlife. But we also want to set aside 25% for young families and 25% for experienced professionals and retirees, to include all the personas and the spectrum. Our second social media is Facebook. The primary user of Facebook is young families and experienced, experienced professionals. Like I said, these are parents that like to post about their kids in Facebook groups and so on. Secondary is young professionals. They do still use Facebook and can be used as a resource to market to them. However, the target post split, this post split changes a little bit here than Instagram. Here, we want to target 40% to young families and 40% to experienced professionals and retirees, while targeting only 20% to young professionals, as they are the group that uses Facebook the least. So for social media and Instagram, for Instagram and Facebook, we have a little content highlights that we want to focus on. Like I said before, we want to focus on the personas, but we also want to post on the, we want to focus on the post frequency. We want to post new content two to one ratio. What this means is, as businesses post throughout North Kansas City, we want to, like, repost what they, what they're posting, get their word out through ours, through our social media, and go out by ourselves, take pictures, make new content that we can post to promote North Kansas City as well.
All right. And for our next social media, we're going to be talking about Twitter. And like I said earlier, only one in five Americans use Twitter, and most of it only use for, use it for a news feed and not actually searching for new content. So because of this, we're going to limit the resources we use on Twitter. And we're basically just going to be using it as a news feed ourself by just informing the people, kind of, what's going to be going, what are the two big things going on in North Kansas City each week? And lastly, and this is our biggest piece of our social media marketing, we're going to be creating a YouTube channel for North Kansas City. With the two interns we have for our digital media, we're going to be creating a monthly highlight video highlighting what's going on in North Kansas City. And along with that, we're going to be creating a hype video, so to speak, to kind of hype up everything that's going on in North Kansas City and get people excited about coming down here. And lastly, over the summer, we have debated about hiring a professional videographer to kind of bridge the gap between the spring students of Northland Caps and the fall students of Northland Caps.
Another part of the YouTube channel that we're looking into doing is having a weekly video, maybe highlighting one business throughout North Kansas City, like a three to four-minute interview with the owner or with people around the establishment.
And next, I just want to talk about some things that is a general must for all of our social media as a whole. So first of all, we really need to include the North Kansas City hashtag. We already do that in our Exploring KC page, but, and that's going to be a big part of getting that hashtag up, so people will see it in their feeds and in their explore pages of their own accounts. Next, we need to link our social media and our websites back and forth from each other. So on the website, we need to have a link to all of our social media. And on our social media, we need to have a link to our website, because driving traffic to our website is going to be huge later on. Next, we need to self-promote, because all of our social medias are going to have different content from each other. We need to promote the different content on each social media as well. And lastly, we need buy-in from all the businesses in North Kansas City. This means we need the businesses in North Kansas City to tag us, use the hashtag, and we'll do the same to them back. And this will kind of create a social media community around the businesses in North Kansas City. We really believe we can create a movement around that. And lastly, we'll be talking about the targeted ads we'll be using for North Kansas City. These ads will be promoting the businesses in North Kansas City along with the various activities that people can partake in here. And there's three different scenarios for the budget. We tiered it into good, better, and best. And basically, what this means is, for the good tier, we'll be able to reach a good amount of people with a limited budget. For the best, we'll be able to reach even more amount of people with a higher budget. And there really is no difference in what the ads are going to look like. It's just based on how many people can we reach. And lastly, we'll be using a social media tracking service called Brand 24. We debated between choosing a few different social media tracking services, but we landed on this one, because they could provide some really insightful statistics, and they allow us to track keywords as well that are related to North Kansas City but aren't necessarily hashtags or anything like that. So we can see what the general, or what the general noise is about, like the word beer or restaurants, when people post about North Kansas City but don't, like, include us, they don't add us or leave a hashtag, but we can still see what they're saying about us. And we, we'll touch on more about different tiers of that later. And lastly, the website is search engine optimized. I know some of you guys care about that. And that means that the website is basically built to perform well on Google, but the most important thing is going to be driving visits to the website. And the more visits we get on the website, the higher it'll show up in the Google rankings. So that's why it's really important to include the link, the link to our website on our social media and vice versa.
For our actual website, we want to increase engagement as much as possible, because as Tristan said, what matters is having the Exploring KC website show up when people search up North Kansas City. How we want to do this is, just saying it again, redirecting different platforms to our website, promoting from Instagram, Facebook, and so on. We want to promote, we want to promote sales and promotions that businesses are having and put it on our website, so people can go there and see, oh yeah, someone's having this, this sale going on, I will go there. They saw that on our website. We want to have an interactive calendar where people can go and see what's happening two months from now, three months from now. Have, because like, people like to have their schedule planned out, this interactive calendar will help them out. We want to include reviews from people, because people like to hear what other people say. As long as we put some reviews in there in the website, this will increase engagement to the website. We want to put blogs, a blog and news section. What this will do is, the more time people spend on our website, the more engagement it gets. So if people are reading a blog or reading a news section that's on our website, that's more engagement right there. And we want to have targeted keywords that, as Tristan said, like, if people are searching beer, people are searching entertainment, they see that Exploring KC website.
And another thing I forgot to mention earlier was, with our targeted ads, we will be using those keywords that we'll be tracking with the social media tracking services. So for example, if Facebook notices that a certain person is searching beer, we can show them ads for all the, all the breweries in North Kansas City, and that's how we'll be doing our ads.
So who will lead this digital marketing implementation? So it will be led by Mr. Groves and the Business Council. Who will help do it? Think Strategy Marketing with Mr. Matt Mayner has been a great resource, and I believe we'll continue to work together to get this marketing plan going on. Northern Caps interns, like Mr. Groves said, I am one of four interns that have started this process. We have made the YouTube channel. We have made even a Pinterest, just starting off. We already started on the calendar and are working hard to get this marketing plan in place already. We hired, so potentially, we, like Tristan said, in the summer or sometime, we could hire a professional videographer or photographer to bring more professional exposure to North Kansas City. When will it be done? We hope to post four times, maybe five times a week in this, these platforms, different content and so on. We want to have videos in our YouTube channel, monthly, maybe even weekly, if it's like the, with the businesses, just having interactions with the owners and so on. And we want to have the ads and data analysis implementation. This will depend, this will depend on the frequency of the ads, how many people we reach, and so on.
So we thought of the idea of having a mural in North Kansas City. So first off, we want to have the North Kansas City High School, they want, we want to have them have a mural competition, see who, you know, creates the best mural. And I believe we've already started contact with the high school. We want to incorporate the hashtag and the logo in this mural. So the hashtag Exploring KC, Exploring KC logo, and I believe the North Kansas City logo in there as well. We're just throwing this out there, maybe the mural could be thrown on, you know, Hawaiian bros and the collaboration parking lot wall, just, just, just as an idea. And then any donation from any local business would help too. So this is example of a mural. This is the angel wings in Parkville. I don't know where exactly where it is in Parkville, but it's very popular there. I noticed a bunch of people I know will go down there and take pictures with it. And, yeah. And this is the idea we thought of. So this is wings from a geometric bee, and we took the bee out because it, you didn't really want to take pictures in front of a bee. You feel like you'd be the bee and, no, these, these would be the wings. And these wings sort of are industrial. We might use industrial colors for this, this mural, but we want to have this mural feel industrial and modern, because North Kansas City is industrial but with a modern twist.
And the idea behind this mural is, it's created for, it's created for and by people in North Kansas City. It'll be created from a competition from the North Kansas City High School. And we believe that having this mural in the heart of North Kansas City and Armour Road will bring maybe past alumni of North Kansas City High School to come back and take pictures with it and explore the rest of Armour Road, see how it's developed, and so on and so And next, we'll be talking about our billboard. So we have scouted out a billboard location. It's on Armour and I-29, around the intersection of that. And it gets 100,000, 100,000 daily impressions a day. So for this, this will range from one to three slides per day. And each slide for, excuse me, one slide will be focused around events, one slide will be focused around businesses, and one slide will be focused around the parks and life in North Kansas City, basically. And these will all be branded as Exploring KC.
So another physical marketing aspect that we were looking into is giving out stickers. So stickers that you can put in your water bottle. Water bottles are becoming very popular nowadays, Save the Turtles and so on. So we want...
Secretariat.
So the goal is to just have exposure of Exploring KC. If we have these little stickers in menus or in water bottles, people will see that and hopefully, like, check it out and so on. The content will be just Exploring KC real forward, come to our website, put this hashtag wherever you want to. The sizes will be just regular stickers, about two, two by one and a half inches that can fit in a water bottle. So another big part of this marketing plan was creating a story for North Kansas City. So for this story, we want to evoke an emotion with the viewer. We want to have them feel good when they hear about North Kansas City. In this story, we want to keep the roots that define North Kansas City. We know it's an industrial town, industrial town, but we want to redefine it. We don't want people to think it's dirty. We don't want people to just drive by it whenever they're going to work. We want people to see that it's actually a really fun and interesting place. We want to give more exposure. This is the whole point of the marketing plan, bring more people to North Kansas City. And we want to educate people that North Kansas City doesn't stand for Kansas City as a whole. It is North Kansas City. So this is a little video that we made throughout.
So North Kansas City, small town, local business, very civically active, people who live here.
Civically active.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I feel like a lot of people who live in North Kansas City really care about the way North Kansas City grows and that sort of thing.
Family town, good family values.
Yeah, I like Armour Road. It's got a small-town feel, and it's really close to downtown Kansas City, Missouri.
Absolutely.
I love some of the smaller shops that do specialty things, like Beal Garage on Swift is really cool.
Yes, sir.
And Chicken Pickle is great ass.
I think of a small town in the middle of Kansas City metropolitan area that is 15 to 20 minutes from anything I want to do in the city.
Geographically, it's the neighborhood that's just north of the river, formerly an industrial neighborhood, but really an up-and-coming area now.
I don't drink beer anymore, but when I was drinking beer, this was the place I would come, because you can hit several breweries. It's all great, great taprooms like here. Screenland Armour has a lot, a good tap list. I also do come to the Rhino a lot.
For me, my big interest was in restoring the theater and all the work that they did there and the programming that they started doing when Adam and Brent took that place over. They really kind of took it to a new level. There were younger guys, they were huge movie buffs, and we knew some of the same people in film circles around here.
Yeah, a little bit.
A little bit?
Yeah, my dad owns a business center, so I've been down there.
Absolutely.
The Armour Road bike lane improvements are fantastic, and I'd love to see a lot more of that throughout the rest of the city.
Yes, sir.
I love the pumpkin decorations.
Yeah, the decorations are always very nice.
I chose to move back to North Kansas City because I was spending all my legal time here.
Cozy, kind of has that, like, cool city vibe, but it feels kind of like small and intimate and like a good place to kind of just, like, hang out. It feels very warm and friendly.
Well, it's, it's home for me. I've lived in North Kansas City proper for about 13 years now.
Home.
Amazing.
So a little bit about the story. That was just an example of what we can put out there in our YouTube channel and social media to evoke people the emotion of wanting to come to North Kansas City.
All right. And now, the part that everyone cares about, the financing. So first, we'll talk about the physical marketing. So we did this into good, better, and best possibilities. And the good possibility was, we could do a good job marketing, we can get a pretty good amount of people to come to North Kansas City. And best, we believe that we can do a really good job and bring a lot of people to North Kansas City eventually. And for the billboard, first of all, the good tier would be having one slide on the moving billboard, and that would run us $3,300 a year. And best would be three slides on the moving billboard for $6,600 a year. The reason there's not two is because you can get three slides for the price of two. And with that, we believe $6,600 is an incredible amount of money to spend for getting 100,000 daily impressions a day on that billboard. And we believe if we could keep showing people the opportunities available to have fun and go out with your friends in North Kansas City, that people will eventually listen to that and come down here. Next, with the stickers and maps, or with just stickers, excuse me, we did this in the good, better, and best again. And good would be giving about 25 stickers per business, and they could do what they pleased with that, whether that be putting them on their windows, handing them out them on their windows, handing them out to their constituents or whatnot. And then the best would be a hundred business, would be a hundred stickers a business, and this would range between $300 and $700 depending on how much we buy. And lastly, the mural would hopefully be free of cost because the North Kansas City High School students would be designing it, and we would have, we would hopefully have the paint donated by different businesses around the area. Moving on, we have the digital marketing. And so with our targeted ads, this is pretty self-explanatory. The more we spend, the more outreach we'll have. So for a good range, we'll have three thousand, we'll be spending $3,700, $3,700 in targeted ads, and the best range, we're spending about $7,500 in targeting ads. And with the social media service, there's two different, there's two different types of tiers we can buy with Brand 24. For one, there's the premium service. The premium service tracks a limited amount of statistics on social media, and it'll give us updates about once a week on how well we're doing. And the Mac service costs about $199 a month or $2,400 a year, and we really thought that the Mac service would be better because it gives us more data and it allows us to track more keywords along with providing updates whenever we need them. And with that, it comes with a personal assistant that'll help us track, sift through the data that the website will collect for us, and they can guide us on how we can improve our social media tactics and get better and get more traffic. And lastly, the website improvement, the website improvement will be done in-house by us, but we would like to buy up domains. So basically what this means is that when people search, so our website is ExploringKC.com, but when people search up ExploringKC.org or ExploringKC.net, that it'll redirect them and tell, well, right now, there'll be an error, but if we buy up these domains, it'll redirect them just to our site. And moving on, our grand total, if we just stick with the good tier, it'll be about $8,500. But if we give, if we really do, if we can put in as much money as we possibly can, and we believe we can do a really great job bringing people to North Kansas City with about $17,000 as a budget. And lastly, how are we going to track success? For social media, we're going to track how we're doing using Brand 24, and we can track on Brand 24 what people are saying about us and how they're saying it in a positive light. We can talk about in a positive or negative light, and we can address that later on. And we can also, we'll also be able to track how many views our account is getting, and we can track our hashtags as well, just see how we're improving. Next, we can talk about our website statistics, basically tracking how well our website is doing, where the links are coming from, so where we're having the most success bringing people to the website, whether that be from Google or our social media. And lastly, we can talk about citywide statistics. So it's kind of hard to track how many people come into North Kansas City daily when it, when it comes to, when they're coming to the destination attractions per se. But what we were thinking was, we could take a lump sum of businesses and just track their sales tax and see if that increases or decreases and whether that has any correlation with our marketing. And thank you for lending your, lending your time to us and letting us present. We'd love to hear any questions. Thank you.
All right. Gentlemen, very impressive. Thank you for coming out. This is, this is exciting. We've needed this, the thing you keyed in on very early is, have you been to North Kansas City? Well, of course I have, it's that spot up by the airport, right? And that's probably our biggest struggle in, like, in all of this, is identifying North Kansas City proper versus KC North. And one thing I would encourage you to do is explore some sort of way to make that a specific identity, so that when people are talking about it, when you're driving people to it, I know that you're talking 29 and Armour for the billboard, that's a great positioning spot, but just making sure that we lock in that location so that we're not sending people to Gladstone, we're not sending people to Liberty or Zona Rosa, that kind of thing.
Yeah, of course. And we were doing our survey, it was very common for people to say, where's North Kansas City? And they say, oh, Parkville, Liberty.
Right. Couple other things, so you've already got the YouTube channel set up?
Yes, we already started setting up the YouTube channel.
Okay. Is it public yet?
Yeah, well, we haven't posted anything, but it is public. We already started contacting businesses, seeing if we could set up a meeting with them, if we could go maybe take some photos, take some videos, and hopefully start posting as soon as possible.
Very good. Rich is obviously a great resource for that, lining up meetings with business owners. I've got some contacts as well, so I'd love to like make some calls for you to set up discussions.
Absolutely.
Other things, you mentioned the targeting on social media, you've got the three groups you've identified. Are you going to be a little more granular than that, like geo-targeting people around the area? Are you targeting within North Kansas City? Are you targeting Parkville, Liberty, Zona, that kind of thing, KC proper?
We'll be talking, we'll be targeting people in the Northland area because those are our main customers right now.
But I think that also goes along with which range we decide to go with, because the more you pay, obviously, the more range those ads will have.
And then the one last thing I'd point at, point you at, and I'll talk with you afterwards as well, there's a Facebook page that's very active right now, it's called North Kansas City Neighbors. If you haven't stumbled across that one, it's got a lot of traction around the city, so I definitely focus some effort there.
Absolutely.
Appreciate the presentation very well laid out. A little upset you didn't include MySpace targeting in here. No, I did have, there was some duplicate efforts, it seems like, around this compared to like what River North's doing in terms of like some of the blog writing and stuff. Did you discuss anything with them or any collaboration there that you two can kind of work together on?
We discussed collaboration, but where we focus on every destination attraction in North Kansas City, whereas River North just addresses, or mainly addresses their board members. And so, as, we would be willing and loving to collaborate with them, but we understand that they have their obligations as well.
Yep. No, I just, if you talk about blogs and some of the other things, I know they already have some writers that were doing stuff with that, so I didn't know if there's some opportunity there to, you know, build that relationship. That's all I got, thank you.
Well, I was really impressed with it, and it's all the modern type, you know, I would go for the best column of all myself because we have spent thousands of dollars over the year, and not wasted, but thousands of dollars on experts for this, experts for that. This, to me, is a small price to pay for what we'll get out of it.
I agree with Rick.
By the way, just in terms of the funding, Business Council's indicated us there won't be an additional request beyond what has been allocated in the fiscal year 2020 budget. So whichever tier they ended up going, they end up going with, it, it, it won't be coming, at least as of tonight, to the city asking for additional funds.
And we did budget a little bit of money for this.
There's $20,000 in the budget.
Specifically, okay, good. Great. I thought you guys did a great job and looked at a lot of different aspects, and appreciate that. And, yeah, I love the idea of the mural. I wouldn't limit the high school students, I mean, I think they might come up with something really creative that we haven't thought of, but I think you did a nice job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, with that mural, sorry, with that mural, social aspect, like the wings or whatever it is that causes people to want to go there, take a picture, throw it out on social media, that's, that's a huge thing for, you know, bringing awareness, so great job with that idea.
The idea is to have something representational. It can be wings like the ones in Parkville, or it can be like the famous Kansas City mural in downtown, something like that.
Something memorable.
Exactly.
Something for senior pictures.
Hey, there you go.
Of course.
Okay, well, we thank you, gentlemen, and Rick, okay.
Just a few wrap-up comments. By the way, the bee that it referred to is actually a hornet. Does that mean, does that mean, mean a little bit more to you? I think that was the intention, to attract the North Kansas City High School alumni from all over the country. I just wanted to, I think you stated it very well about, this is focused on all the destination attractions of North Kansas City, and we do want to work just as, just as strongly for those that are part of the River North, and we will continue to look for ways to work better with them. Hopefully, when they see what we're doing here, they will be more likely to want to find ways to cooperate together. So what they're doing right now, Hunter is part of the four as well as John Paul, they're starting to get acquainted with the businesses, they've got some questions that they want to have a dialogue with some of the businesses. They're engaged in putting together a social media calendar. It's kind of nitty-gritty, dirty, hard work, trying to anticipate for the whole year, what are the events? And as they learn more about the different businesses, they'll be able to fill in some blanks on that calendar. And they'll be developing content, and it's a part of those discussions and on their own research, and, and they described very well how they would apply that. The videos, the idea is already churning on how to do videos, and part of what we'll be doing with the interns is establishing a way to move forward with other people because these people's role will end May, about May the first, and so we hope that we can find a way to get maybe an unpaid intern or paid intern during the summer and other CAPS interns later for next year to keep going forward. And another thing that wasn't really talked about much is to help the businesses to know how to help themselves better. Some of them, we don't worry about, Chicken and Pickle, they've mastered the art of marketing, so has Harrah's, some of the others, but some of the others are still, they haven't really figured it out, other than word of mouth and loyal customers and things like that. So hopefully, we can help them, because it takes them to be generating some of this content that's got to be posted and reposted. But again, I want to thank this team, they've just done a fantastic job, I'm so proud of the work that they've done, and looking forward also to the new team and how they're doing. Thanks for this opportunity.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Move to a chair. Second.
One favor?
Aye.
I vote.